Your fruit tree down here on my property and get in there and knows.
Yeah, it's especially commercial changes.
Oh, yeah. And I don't sure. The end back in the west. But that's only a lot of eight no tires. That was my thing. I think not only the folks back in Maryland, so it'll be something. I mean, I wouldn't necessarily want to go over that. I love you. Well. Why not? Been a no winner. I think the train is just my seven year old. Okay. Finish you.
Can't help but pick them up.
No, I didn't. I didn't. They got away from Lloyd. They want to explain, I think. So it just. You know, we saw that. Nice guy. How are you doing? Well, how are you? Good. We came all the same. Which I bring. Pretend all the long. You know, had a hundred and maybe highway twelve there. Forty twice out of like. Really tense. For your turn day, I'm in a friend. You're Jay. It's the new arms like south. I can see the great ones across the board. Yeah, there you go. Four minutes, like two years soon. Forty's place. A lot of cross board. Oh, they didn't have anything in the world. Uh, they got me taken two years. You can't not have your work. Um, and then the walls. Isn't that down, down? That was a, we were only ones there. Well, that was nine, two, nine and a half. People lost their mind. I'm so good. There was a big angle there and you're wondering. What did you do? Did you all tell me? Oh, yeah, we had a van for Friday and then Saturday six, I was disappointed. Two more and that up with the other group. Yeah, it was always a man or guy who didn't see the van. That's every door. I just been house. It's something super nice. This weird location, literally right on the one of the main track. Then there's a hedgerow, but it. Right. They got swarmed. Aaron, I, uh, Nikki Jessica. Probably Kristen couldn't make it. Well, just got back. I think you're supposed to. Yeah, you know. You know, I don't like. We call these the cheap seats. Now, these are the next important. No responsibility, big opinion. I think that's gonna work. We don't have to be responsible. Well, I learned that. So I don't get near the. Would you be there in the world? Was the eventers.
Learn something.
He was walking.
I thought you'd go down the hole.
Well, he does, but they're having somebody do it. Survey. Or he did something. Although, yeah. Even like that's true. We've been doing. Oh, yeah.
Well, no, Tina Hathaway for dinner. I have, I have a meeting in December that. Well, that was elected. You were appointed. So that was the after the election. I, my term ends any.
I see for you any sign.
But you understand after the election, the certify.
These guys.
Okay. Make that. I could grab that. Who's running? Yes. For.
How are you doing, Robert? I haven't seen you in a while.
Uh, you know, soccer was fun, sort of. We only had one rain game, which was nice. Rest of the season, we just. Let's get through it. But the girls are great kids. They, uh, second highest GPA in Draco League, so.
Nice.
We don't win games, but we have smart young women at our high schools. And morning back.
You do all that coaching.
I know. Last week takes me away the whole two months. We start last week, August, and go to last week, October. And when games are every Tuesday, third. But travel or home. Another season in the bud. Two girls, uh, young girl made our goalies. Made a second team all league and then Dippin Adams made an honourable. We got two girls on there.
Can you give them back?
Under sheriff, I, I give Mary my question, so I don't have to ask them during the meeting. So she, she's covering those now, so.
All right, six o'clock. Thank you all very much for being here. The call meeting to order by joining me in the public allegiance. Public allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, I do have a couple of you have signed up for public comments. Um, let's start with Sam. Make sure you introduce yourself and where you're from.
Stephanie Stevenson. I just wanted to thank the outgoing members for all of your work you've done here. And well, I guess thank the ones that are staying here for all their work. Anyway, thanks. It's been a lot of fun coming to meetings and watching how cities work. Anyway. Good luck to you.
Thanks. Mary?
I'll second that. Thank you all very much for your public service. It is totally appreciated. Even it doesn't feel like that sometimes and that. Um, first, um. The post office stuff, the change, uh, in our lines. Uh, let's not do that again on any other street. Our streets are way too narrow and we've got too many big freaking trucks. And their butts just stick out into the street and, uh, on narrow streets with diagonal parking. It was way easier when it wasn't diagonal parking. I wish we could have done it with tape so we could see how it works. And plus you've closed off the drop off box. Uh, you would have to remove two parking places in order to actually allow someone to, uh, go in there. So that's an impact on that business. Uh, secondly, I don't, uh, uh, think many of you, except for Chuck here, attended the EFC meeting the other night, Monday, about the Cascade cable transmission, uh, withhold. And, um, now. There's a lot of legalities here, and one of them was that somebody from the city had to be appointed to the EFC board, apparently. And you were not. Neither was North Bonneville represented because, uh, Asaleki was representing the county because it impacts Skamania County. But there is also an impact to Highway fourteen. Because that cable will not only be in the river, it will come out of the river, I believe, seven point five miles. I sent a letter in very late this afternoon. I hope you all have it. Um, you want me to enter a hard copy in the record or will go soft copy being known?
Oh, you said emailed it in already? Yeah. It'll be included in the, in the minutes.
Okay, and, uh, so that's my official comment. I would urge the city to contact EFC and, uh, um. This is not a done deal by any means, and it is time, it, the city should be represented and North Bonneville too. And DOT wasn't even at that meeting and Highway fourteen would be impacted. So, um, there's a lot of stuff going on that poor river is just being asked to do a lot for the communities. Uh, we've got the pump, uh, what is it? Golden Day Pump Project. We've got this proposal. We've got this, you know, that river needs a break. But, uh, I would urge you all to read about this project and, uh, see what you think about it. I, I, I don't think it will go anywhere because it's just too damaging and I can't see people liking it to be on the river. Cause there'd be some dredging involved, a whole bunch of other stuff. So, uh, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but there's a lot of information out there and there will be, I guarantee you, way more meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else? Go ahead, Jeff. Make sure you state your name and where you're from for the record.
Stevenson. Uh, I attended the, uh, James's luncheon today. Where we had various different representatives from governmental entities here in the county. Talking about the state of the county and you were represented by Wes. And he did a great job. He made a, a, a nice presentation. I think covered a lot of stuff that's going on now and where you're looking ahead. So I just, I just wanted to, to commend, you know, uh, to you and his performance of that, of that luncheon.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, is anybody on the?
Uh, no.
Alrighty. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve consent agenda items, say it through me. Second.
Person second, any discussion? All favor say aye.
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 We missed three changes to the agenda.
Would you like to make a change to the agenda, Pat?
Uh, yes, I sent in a request to Wes and you about adding an item.
Is it under your rules? You got a vote on it to add to it? I'm saying, yeah, you just need a consensus. It's in the R C G, you guys have it in section four, council rooms. Since it's not a special meeting.
Wes, do you want to tell them what my request was?
Why don't you tell us what your request was?
Since it involves you and you have a conflict, maybe you should.
What's the conflict?
I asked that we bring up the Radcom contract. The provisions of that contract are that it were, it's perpetually renewed automatically. If the council wanted to go out for bid, the only way they can do that is to do it this month. Because if you wait till December, it's too late. It's a renewal contract for one year. And so we would. And so we cannot ask for bids after that. I talked to Wes about this a couple of months ago. He said to bring it up during the budget session. And I did, and, and I realized it hasn't been brought up on the agenda. So I sent Wes and you an email earlier today about that, asking it to be put on the agenda. Wes deferred to you, said he was going to ask you your thoughts. I sent Wes an email later on this evening, afternoon, when I thought about it and said that, well, you have a conflict.
How so?
Because. You make money under the contract. You're a paid employee of Radcom.
Paid employees contract, but I don't get to vote on that.
I know, but I shouldn't even be talking to you about it right now because you have a conflict.
I don't believe I do.
He's not an owner of Radcom.
I know, but he's employee of Radcom and he comes once a month. He comes often and makes money on that contract, so I don't think it's.
I go to other places and get paid. Every month I get paid.
I'm not gonna.
Where I go.
I'm not gonna sit here and debate this with you because I believe you have a conflict. What I am gonna say that I think that I asked, I've been asking for this to be agenda item for some time now. And I would like this to be agenda item so the council can decide as a council whether we're gonna send this out for bid. Because this is one of the few contracts that we don't look at every year. Okay, for example, Robert, your contract, we renew it every so often. It isn't perpetual. Same thing with Adam Kicks contract. So it is nothing against you, Mr. Mayor, at all. This isn't targeting you. This is a rather large contract where we spent several thousand dollars a month. Last month, we spent five thousand dollars. And I'm not trying to say that that's a bad amount, but I'm just trying to say when you have contracts that large, at times you should look at them and, and send them out for bid. And that, and the council is the only one that can look at that. And so it seems appropriate that I'd be able to get that item on the agenda to let my fellow council members and I decide that issue. And I think that that's an issue that, of course, you should refuse yourself on.
I don't get to vote.
I know that, but I shouldn't even be discussing with you. I think it's improper. So I don't know why you're engaging in conversation with me about it. I think it is improper. Okay? That's my position and I'm not gonna change it.
I disagree with you.
Okay, well, that is pretty clear.
Yeah, okay. Would anybody like to float a motion to, and why can't staff decide to go to Brit? If the council decides that they would like to reevaluate the I T contract, why can't the staff do it? Why do we have to have special counsel consideration?
The coun- council approves contracts. I've been asking the staff, actually. Wes knows, I've been bringing this subject up for a couple of months now, asking, so, and the staff have not brought this up to send it out to bid. Um, so. You know, that's why I'm, and Wes hasn't said otherwise when I, he's, he's not said, well, I don't, I think the account, we could make that decision internally. So we don't need to have the council send it out for bid. Wes has not offered that as an option. So, and, and in fact, does not disagree with it. So I, I don't care how that gets done. If the council can make that decision or staff wants to make a commitment to the council that they will do that by December first, the deadline. And I, I think it takes the council vote on that, but that'd be a question for our legal counsel. The count, count, the contract is, the council affirms a contract. And I think that the, I would think that the council has to be the one to say, hey, we want to send this out for bid and see if we're getting the best deal. And it may very well be Radcom that wins the bid.
Yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah, yeah.
From the legal counsel, the only thing is I'm saying is that you need to have a motion approved to bring it to the agenda tonight. Or you need to have consensus to put it on next month's agenda. And I've read the contract and I saw that it renews December one. I also didn't see like a penalty for termination or anything in there. So if the council chooses, say in June of next year, you wanted to reevaluate it. I just by the contract terms, I didn't see that there was a penalty or a, you know.
But by the very nature that it says it's renewal, the safest time to renew it or to look at it would be now, right?
Don't, don't disagree. That's what it says on the contract.
Yeah, well, I guess I would make a motion that we put this out, that we add that to the agenda in order to decide if we want to put it out for bid or not.
Done? That's my motion.
The first and the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? Lucy abstained, okay?
Just, just for the record.
Now we're putting that on the agenda, correct?
You have to identify a reason you're standing, i.e. you have a conflict. Cause otherwise you're just advocating. Your obligation under the council to vote yea or nay, unless you have a conflict. I mean, just pointing it out. I mean, her, her vote is her vote. If you abstain, you need to have a basis for abstaining, otherwise you're advocating your.
So it was, everyone said aye except for Lucy, is that what I heard? Okay. So it's an agenda item, so then now.
So you would, well, the motion will be made. Whether to bid out or put out for bid, the Radcom contract under new business on this agenda.
To, to discuss it.
Yeah, to discuss, right?
Yes.
And that just end up going to new business wherever the next item is on the agenda.
To give done consent agenda. Sheriff's Board.
Who do you think? Any questions related to the talk over documents that have been supplied to you?
You and I have already had discussions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate you showing up.
I'm still here.
Might be a time to interject here, Mr. Mayor, it's possible the sheriff's contract that we discussed, I believe, Mr. Cox has been negotiating with the folks at the sheriff's office. It's not in final form yet. Uh, Mr. Kick was gone for approximately 12 days, and so he and I have exchanged emails over the last two days. But we don't have a final form. I have a draft that's gone out for them to review. Hopefully you will have that. Well, there's five contracts that hopefully you will have by December one, so you can review them before the end of the month and, and vote. Those contracts can all be voted on in the last meeting. Your budget, which is on your agenda tonight, has to be approved by December seventh. The statute is twenty-five days prior to the end of the year. Information, if you need to hold special meetings between today and December seventh, you can do that. It's just, there's the statutory requirement to approve your budget, otherwise you're out of compliance with the law here. FYI.
So if there are contracts that are on, that included in the budget, do they need to be signed in order to pass the budget?
No. You can sign the guy, cause you've got it plugged into the budget for those amounts. And if they change or vary by any significant amount, you would do that in your amendment to the budget, January, February.
They have the placeholders.
Right.
In your, yes.
So if they go up or down, because I understand like the sheriffs asked for X, you negotiated Y. I don't know where the budget line.
So have you updated the rest of council on the, the items that you've negotiated with the sheriff?
Not yet.
Okay. So were we?
We could do that if you would like.
I mean, you wouldn't.
You're going.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda to approve tonight, but the terms have been floated. That's fine to have discussion if you want to have that as part of the sheriff's report, which is why I've kind of plugged that commentary in. But yeah, the terms that, that Mr. Cox has been negotiating with the sheriff's office, I certainly can.
Okay, well, so long as council gets a chance to weigh in before it's put on the sheriff's desk to sign.
Well, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we're approving first. So I haven't seen that the, because the commissions are still gonna have to sign out on it too, everything count.
All right, well, cause it sounds like you've asked certain things to be removed from the contract, and I don't know that the other three would have. Might, might have liked an opportunity to decide whether or not to pursue that route.
Yep, it was, it was negotiated and approved between all the parties, uh, that this was what we wanted to present to the council for approval.
Okay, well, if the council doesn't like the direction that you're going with that, then what? Can we kick it back and start over again or?
Well, hopefully we do that well before next month's bidding. And that's why I want to get the, the final drafts out for reviews. Everybody got ample time to review them, have conversations, negotiations, discussion.
Yeah, and I don't recall it historically. Usually historically, am I not wrong? Uh, you send a negotiating party, they come, it's then put on the agenda for approval and then the discussion happens then. Historically, that's what's happened, so I don't understand what's the difference this time, but.
Well, to pass these contracts, we. I mean, I hate to, my 12 years, they would show up literally in December, November, we didn't see drafts earlier. I think what the members of council have been doing in the last year and a year and a half is an appropriate movement. That is review them in advance of the meeting, so the questions don't have to come up, you know, in a first, first time you've seen the document.
I mean, I, I've been more happy to let the, the council know what we have discussed.
Well, I think we're wait, if we're waiting on some drafts from.
No, I think in terms that Mr. Cox has negotiated.
I mean, it's fine, I'll, I'll hear whatever the discussion is.
Maybe discuss when we talk about budget.
Yeah, let's do that. Yeah. All right. Want, yeah, any. Sorry Dave, I'm not, I, I don't know. All right, uh. Yeah. Uh, looks like we're well moving into council business. Oh, public hearing, sorry about the public hearing. Uh, we're gonna do a public hearing for the, uh, twenty twenty-six budget in property tax levy. So do you have the staff in court?
Oh.
Let me, actually, let me think about this cheap sheet. Um, I'd like to open the public hearing at, uh, six fifteen. Uh, second floor.
Jane, do you just want to talk about the, um, the tax levy real quick? Just to give them a quick summary of what it is.
Not prepared to speak this evening.
It's the ad valorem. It's coming up neck, neck later, right?
Yeah. Regular thing that we have passed every year.
So this is our, uh, standard of property tax levy that is raised at one percent each year of by state statutes. It, it, it can't go above one percent. And so this is best every year, um, at the same rate. So it's pretty standard when it comes fast in the budget. I mean, we, we could go into what, what, what they had more taxes, if you would like, but I'm assuming they've all voted on it before.
And there was some information included in the package.
Yes, yes.
So is, is the, um, I'm sorry, we're still.
We are.
Oh, yeah.
I can't. Sorry, I was forgotten. All right, so is there anyone here in, from the public that would like to comment on the one percent increase? Seeing none, like to close the public hearing at six eighteen, questions?
So my, my question is, um, according to this, it looks like, uh, looks like a little over ten thousand eight hundred dollars is what this tax is gonna bring in, is that correct?
I'll, I'll look to Jane for that to confirm the numbers.
Further resolution, just cause I got. The twenty twenty-five levy or the absolute increase of five thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Yeah, plus the value of the new construction is provided. RCW eighty-four, uh, is five thousand forty-eight, so you're just under eleven thousand dollars.
I have to make a clarification on the agenda item. So this issue is just the one percent because the agenda item, maybe I'm just over. It says twenty twenty-six budget and property tax levy. So this public hearing is just on the one percent, not on the budget itself.
Right.
Okay.
Well, but no, it, it, it's, it's supposed to be on both.
The public hearing was.
Yeah, the, the, the public hearing is supposed to be on the budget and the tax levy is, is a, a, a part of, of the budget.
Okay, and, and the budget, so would that be an updated budget then?
Um, it's the same budget as was presented at the last council.
Move, change some of the numbers to reflect the priority discussion that we had two weeks ago.
Well, what I saw in the bag was the two pages, is that?
Yes. Yes, so the two pages is the updated document after we have had all of our meetings and any, uh, changes that were needed were, were reflected. And that, um, spreadsheet or, or not spreadsheet, but the, uh, breakdown is the, uh, official budget that will be passed and sent to the state. And then our document. Breaking it down and graphs and charts will, will also be finished, but, but the actual budget itself is that document.
Okay, cool. Yeah, so I guess I kept waiting to see the budget, like how much we were putting in the parks, how much we were putting in. Yes, and I know it's just me, that, you know, based on our discussion last time, so then I could go to the budget and look, okay, that's how much we're putting for parks, that's how much we're putting for this, uh, for, uh, low income housing, for the things we put there, if anything, that's how much we're putting for code enforcement. So I didn't see a document where I could go to the last meeting, compare what we talked about, and then there was the budget itself. That's what I was looking for, um, and I just kept thinking it would come in, so anyway, but that's.
Yeah, when I, when I look at this. One page document, that doesn't tell me a whole lot. Doesn't, uh, there's no, I mean, where we made the changes, um. Yeah. Yeah.
Do we have that for now?
I can email it to them.
Because we did discuss changes that were gonna be made. And we moved numbers around to reflect the priority discussion.
And those are reflected in that summary sheet.
Yeah, is it is it?
There was like a number some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it possible to adjust over on the property tax, I mean, the one percent thing, and then and I realize I definitely heard Robert said about December seventh. So and the vote on the budget later after analysis, because my only concern is that the public also hasn't seen those those numbers. And you could say, well, why didn't you mention this before the meeting? It's because we all know that the stat, you guys have been way overworked and that we've all been asking you many questions. I've been really hesitant to like bug you more than I already have. So sometimes I make the I decide I'm gonna just wait back and see if I'm when I get it, because I figure you're killing yourself down here trying to produce it, and I don't want to be adjusting. So I assume that it'll come hopefully in time, but anyway, that's.
So the 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 voting on the tack on the on the budget is different than voting on one, like there's three votes that we that are lined out. So the the budget is gonna be a separate vote from the um.
Add the.
Add the alarm.
Yes, yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, I see that. I guess I was confused by it. So A, B, and C, you're saying that it is separate. Okay. I see that now.
Public carrying is different.
Right. Public carrying is the whole thing, and then.
Okay, I I saying, okay, that reassures me somewhat.
Yeah, no, I just wanted that most train. I was like.
Yeah, I was getting confused by that too, because I thought why some of those items are.
Yeah, we're good.
It's easier when it's me.
Any other comments, questions?
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash four six four and authorizing the one percent increase of the ad valorem tax levy for the twenty twenty-six budget.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any further discussion?
All right, I basically if you want to know what I'll be voting on, and I can say now during the discussion period, but I I would I will be voting no on this. And probably the reason why is because it's a small amount. And I think we could run a tighter ship and and I think a a sign of goodwill to our citizens that we just the county a couple of years back did not take the one percent. So we're only talking about ten thousand dollars. I think it would show a sign of goodwill to the public to say, hey, we're gonna try to see, we're gonna try to have more efficient operation before we ask you for more money. So it's a symbolism thing and and real money, ten thousand dollars. And also, we've not seen the updated budgets figures yet and analyze that. So I think for me, anyway, it's inappropriate for me to support this. So um, I'll be voting no for this and other reasons. Um. And and I won't go on beyond that.
Okay, so you you understand that inflation goes up more than this one percent does every year.
This basically their cost of living.
Yeah, hey, I trust me, I understand all that. In fact, I understand money well enough to know that we're right. Confident that we can live without this money and that we can also run a tighter ship. I'm very confident of that, having studied this budget for two years. So I.
And I would and I would agree with with Pat. I think there are things within the budget that uh can be adjusted much more than eleven thousand dollars and to throw an additional tax on on to the folks, uh especially after the pass of the sewer ordinance. Yeah. I oh, we go ahead, go ahead and vote that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Resolution carries.
I'm up to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve thirty-two fixing the amount to be raised by ad valorem taxes for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion, any further discussion? All favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Opposed.
Do you have more for carries or no carries? All right. So Robert has detailed the the timeline for the budget. So it has to be passed by December seventh. We don't have a ton of time. What information? What information, what additional information would you all like to see? That would make you ill-prepared to vote tonight?
Well, I'll start. Um. When we first started talking about this, I had mentioned it started with fire fund. We had Fire District Two revenues coming in at fifty thousand and their expenditures were at sixty-four nine forty. But that has not changed. Those don't balance out. And I mentioned that to you, and that has not changed in the budget for some reason. Um. And um I questioned the amount of money and admin fees, those kinds of things.
Okay.
And according to the document that was sent out, um we adopted the finance policy, which I which I understand. And the allocation of legislative, executive, legal, finance, and central service costs um are spread out equally over all other funds. And it's identified as general admin fee in those other funds. My question is, why do we have um those exact those fees of the legislative, executive, legal, finance, and central services costs also included in the budget above and beyond the admin fees?
You happen to know the difference between the two or it was the same thing?
A lot of the fees and amounts, um, I've been understanding that I know the end of the year, and I haven't reached the end of the year. Um. So I haven't. I don't have a lot of experience with that part yet.
Bills?
Well, I would need to see the complete budget with the changes made from last time. Uh, from the something to the, I just we've not seen a final complete budget that's complete yet, and that's what I need to see a copy of. I think it's a little unfair to have me tell you what else I need to know without, in other words, that's a budget document that's several pages long that you have to study and digest. And so I can't study and digest something I don't have. So um that I wouldn't be prepared to vote on it tonight. You you can go ahead and have a vote if you want, because that's typically how we do things. We just cram it through on a three-two vote. But um I have to study it. And we don't, I don't have a complete document yet. And I apologize for the way my brain works when it comes to money. It's just certain, um, it's the way a lot of brains work. It's the way a lot of brains are trained to work. So I don't think it's me just trying to be obstructionistic here, because this isn't fun for me either. Having to come to meetings because we don't have the information. I mean, I just assumed this would be done as well. But it's not, it's not fun for me either, and I'm willing to come to another meeting. If we need to or just vote on it tonight. If they're going to go that. But in fairness to the public, I think they should see a complete budget too, and they've not seen it, and they'll be the ones getting the bill.
Anyone else?
We're looking for comments from everybody at the table here. Um. I fully understand and appreciate the concerns that both uh Councilmember Rice and Cox have. Um. It's my understanding this would be an opportunity for them to present maybe a negotiated budget for our sheriff's department. I also understand that rather than looking at a uh a balance sheet and trying to reconcile actual expenses that we're what we're looking at here is a is a budget that's probably that worked and reworked and based on historical expenses and averages that that I would have to concede there's been a lot of work put into it. And that's if there are any adjustments that need to be made, that they would be made through the course of of budget amendments for the following fiscal year. So at this at this time, I'm comfortable with the budget that's been designed.
Also for me, uh, I have, I mean, to say that I, again, speaking just for me, I have I have seen the budget and then adjustments that we've we made some adjustments, move some things around based on on priorities and whatnot. I understand that this isn't a full breakdown, but this is what's presented, has to be approved for the state for the budget is this is this actual document. So um I mean, we made a lot of amendments uh as we went through, because you have to close out the that year in January and 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 make changes. There are gonna be changes to this, absolutely. Um, but for me, I'm okay, I'm okay with it with this two-page document and the way that it's broken down for approving it. And then, I mean, I to say that we haven't seen it, we have seen it, we had the whole breakdown, we've had it, we got that last, we've had it for for a month. We've just been making, there have been changes made to it. We've had as we move forward, but um, I'm okay with with what we have right now. I would um I I will be on council after next month, and I would like to be able to actually drilling and see where we are with our budget as the year goes on. So as a Stephenson uh resident, I'll have a different view on on where I'd like to see as we go and make amendments and start spending and doing that throughout the year. But for me on council right now, I'm I'm comfortable with what I've seen and got and where we are at this point, so.
Didn't realize we only made one amendment to the budget this year.
Did we only we only voted on one amendment to the budget? Well, and we came in and did pretty good. Right?
See? Good. Well, I would entertain a motion.
I'm up to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve twelve thirty-three authorizing the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Second.
First and a second, any further discussion? All they say aye?
Aye.
Fine.
All opposed?
Opposed. Aye.
You got a budget? Um, all right, which who's gonna lead the discussion on the expenditure, preamble for expenditures?
Um. I'll leave it up to both counselors.
I know that Pat kind of added on to it, so do you hold on just a second. Mayor, do you want me to discuss?
Oh, yes, yes. Thank you for reminding me. Thank you for reminding me. Yes, please. Yes, please.
Uh, so we met with the uh Sheriff Shire and Chief Minus and Under Sheriff Wyckoff. Um, we discussed several things about the contract. Um. Bottom line is we're looking at a ten thousand dollar increase in the budget for one year uh or in the contract for one year plus uh CPI. Um, whatever that works out to at the end of the year. Um, additionally, cutting out the uh verbiage about animal control. Um, there in the addendum, there is a verbiage about mental health component that hasn't been done for the last three years. Um.
And then in enforcing city code.
Yes, and enforcement of uh city ordinances. Because right now, all of the ordinances they that they enforce are by uh RCW statute.
Oh, okay.
So um, if if they were to enforce city codes, just for information, all of that money would come back to the city as opposed to part of it going to the state. So but right now that's the way it's they're doing it, and so we decided to just cut that out. Um. Also, we discuss the impact of events on the on the city and on especially on our law enforcement folks. And um we have suggested that we take a look at changing or permitting for any type of events that would require traffic control um and make that mandatory that that is in place prior to approval of say a parade or any type of an event that's gonna require that type of activity. Um, the sheriff was going to work out the contract so that if folks you know, wanted a parade, they could do so um and hire them to do it. Or they could provide certified uh flagging staff to to do it as well. So but that would be up to the org event organizers. And so we're in the process of talking about that with committee.
And so what's the uh just that that's just not part of it. You're talking about adding that to the permitting portion, because right now that's not
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
Part of the but it would but it was part of the discussion and and how to how to take some of the pressure off of our law enforcement staff, so.
Yeah.
That's yeah, pretty much covered. Robert, you think?
Yeah, I mean, there's removal of that. Uh, the CPI just for the rate is three point two this year, so it's it's currently at two point six, which is what we had last time. So it's it's gonna be a bigger number. Uh, I think Jane has the full number plugged in on what will cost. What was the monthly number?
Oh, um.
Just so everybody knows what the monthly cost will be under the negotiating contracts.
Seventeen or eighteen thousand, something like that.
Right.
I did the map at home, I agree with you.
Yeah. Anyway, that's that's pretty much the conversation. Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, monthly is twenty-seven three twenty-nine ninety-three. It's a monthly increase of one thousand six fifty-five, I think.
Thank you. For the negotiations and summary.
All right, uh, the Rad Comp Contract.
Oh, no, we're on the preamble.
Oh, sorry. Skipping ahead again. Yeah, okay, who's who's starting us off on that?
We'll start off with a first point. Uh, last month I had passed out a a suggestion for everybody to look at. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to read it. Maybe dissect it a little bit, but uh what I what what I had suggested was that we put together uh some sort of a sheet or a preamble that could be put together with suggestions that come before council. Um, spend some time, you know, it was something to the effect that we when it's something is brought to council for their approval and a expenditure item, that there be uh an indication of the time sensitivity of the issue, the actual cost, the manner of payment, whether it be existing budgeted item, additional general or otherwise fund expenditure, grant or finance debt. And if it was financed debt, the scope of financing and debt service impact in long terms is it's any budgetary? And is debt to be offset by consumer building of services rendered? And then the final item, anything for any capital improvements or any suggestions of um long-term sustainability, maintenance issues resulting from those improvements should also be presented for future budgetary planning years. And I suggested that it was not uh completely outlined. Certainly not necessarily comprehensive, but hopefully get a look at it, that you might have some ideas and things it's gonna be changed. Um. But what I hope with it to do this is that it would uh compel stakeholders to not only consider need, but to reflect physically on the impact of city budgeting and expenses. Might also eliminate the need for council members to repeatedly ask the same questions over and over as well as give a better insight when weighing contingent factors in making the decision. So. Does it sound like a? A reasonable suggestion?
If I could just ask a question, because I wasn't involved in the discussion, I was trying to track it. So what you're saying is, so. Staff puts together a proposal for a contract or grant or improvement, you want this additional information to be provided.
Okay, part of the presentation to council.
So it necessarily wouldn't have to go in the agenda, it would just be part of what they have to deliver in the messaging during the staff report. Okay, I was just tracking.
I think it's a good idea.
Um, I'll say from the staff side, I I I don't have a any issue with it. I think that's, I think it 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 actually. Be helpful and we won't have to spend as much time going back and forth on the details, so.
Is is there a dollar limit that you guys want that for? And I'm just making my notes, is there some, or is it any contract, I got five thousand on the contract, you want that additional information, or is it?
That's why I left it up for discussion here, so I don't know, yeah, if you have any suggestions on maybe a. Minimum dollar amount for. It's certainly don't even do it from administrative expenses.
I think, uh.
Don't we have five thousand dollars?
Right, I think that on anything, uh, contracts over, what's the, contracts are over, is it over five?
That's almost a small order roster project.
Oh, and everything else does, okay. Well, I mean, if if they're, if they're bringing up uh something too, I I don't, I I don't, I don't see an issue with. With having tho- that information, the the. Yeah, would be, I think it'd be helpful for anything that we're saying yes or no financially too. I think that's. Yeah, a reasonable, yeah, no, I have no problem with that. And once you get a form, you know, once we get the form or some kind of cadence to how they're, how it's being presented. Then council will be able to go, oh, yeah, this is what I, of course that. Yeah, so no, I have no, no problem with it.
Any pieces in here you think need to be changed or or modified, or just, you know, we're trying to put together a. Worksheet that people could use.
Yeah, I think maybe under the existing budgeting, I budgeted item, you may actually list out whatever. Uh, fund that's affected.
List this, the line item or what?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, if you want, uh, Jan and I can work on that, and at the next meeting. We can show it to you all to to approve, and if you want to make changes, we can do it then, if that works.
And you want me to organize a resolution, just there'd be direction to staff.
Pat, it was a little more in yours, right? Your presentation?
Yeah, um, thanks, um, yeah, mine was dealing with the vouchers and just trying to help. And I, by the way, I appreciate the fact that we got some of the information in advance, and that was real helpful. Um, well, Jane and Wes on that, because then we were able to, people were able to analyze them or ask questions. Instead of on the, on the spot. And so, uh, the, the purpose, um. I mean, I I gave the council, um, wrote up a brief thing, and this, the purpose was to ensure that the city council can resumancibly review the vouchers and expenditure requests. Without micromanaging staff or creating unnecessary difficulty. Uh, then the procedure with improved transparency allows council members adequate time to understand and ask questions on the vouchers. And I, and as, and I won't read this all, it's very short, but. One of the things I said for routine things such as uh that just like utility bills and stuff like that, that that. That speaks for itself, and a short summary page, uh. Could in, should include, should accompany each voucher batch identifying. The categories expenses included, you know, like utilities, payroll items, blah, blah, blah. Uh, whether the listed items are routine, routine within the adopted budget, any non-routine items or unusual expenditures requiring a council attention. And then those non-routine items, without going into the whole thing, would have a brief explanation of what they are. So I guess the, and, uh, this was. Anyway, so I guess the question that I would. Have, and I don't want to read, read it all, and it's, uh, even though it wouldn't take long, is, uh, did the council or the staff see any. Issues with or problems that would be arduous for them with it.
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll ask Jane, because that would be mostly in her sphere. I don't particularly have a problem. I don't know if that would add.
Um, I know we did do a bit of a time crunch this time to get A P stuff done before.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the end of the week, I just was staffing and everything, so. And I should be able to provide this in some form.
Yeah, I mean, it 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 may take a while, as as Jane, uh, uh, adjusted that of, um, o- over a few months, so there may be some some hiccups here and there, but I don't. In general, unless there's, it's a real. You know, suck on time, I I don't see any issue with that, so.
Yeah, and the whole point was just to avoid the fact of having a sack, and then. When we vote on those things, I mean, we're responsible for what we vote, so then we can know in advance. What we voted on as opposed to coming to the meeting, oh, here's the information. Well, in a meeting, you you don't, you can't really go through that much and know what you're. Looking at, and so this seemed to be. How can we do this without trying to micromanage, because none of us want to do that, uh, but yet feel that we know what we're voting on.
Sure, yeah, and and I'll just say, I I think it's good to find a a solution, so it's more uh transparent to you about what they are, but also to know that. Uh, um, those vouchers and things, that they're processed right up until.
Yeah.
The day here, so I mean, so it is a a little tricky with that, but if, but if if this could work, that that's where Jane could, uh. File those, and it makes it easier for for you all to understand the vouchers, then it is great.
Right, and the items, and tell me if I'm wrong, it's a question, not a. Uh, any of the items that would be unusual, that would require a brief statement, those probably would be known. In other words, you, those wouldn't be. The staff would know about those ahead of time, like, hey, we got the, we got this big bill coming up, we better explain what that is, because they might not know. I mean, those things can be anticipated, probably, right?
Um, like a vehicle breakdown?
Well, I I'm not sure, because it it depends on what might raise your. Red flag. So, for instance, for us, the, um, um. Uh, contractor for our, um, wastewater treatment plant, um, he's been on, um. The bills for for some time, i- as a contractor, but but you all had questions about that, so to us. That didn't raise any red flags to us. That was pretty routines, but we didn't know from your perspective that, that. That, that, that you weren't aware of of what it was. So, so that there may be some. Disagreement there about, or not disagreements, but you know, that that may slip.
Yeah, and I think the question there was, hey, is this the final payment or what's this about? That's all the question was, so, but I understand, you know, I look at this. This preamble, maybe Chuck, I don't know, I don't want to put words in his mouth, looks at it the same way, it's a breathing, living document, it's it's an ideal. It's a, it doesn't mean that, hey, oh, this one time you, uh, it isn't a gotcha document, it's a, hey, how can we facilitate it?
Right.
You're starting to get, so where people like me don't. Feel like, hey, I not looked at those.
Oh, I I completely understand it, and I think if it's okay with you, and I think the same way with the preamble, but we we can start out with a worksheet or a document, and then I'm sure. As we go through it, we'll have to make some changes and and tweak it here and there, so I.
Exactly.
I I I buy with that, that that helps.
Yeah.
So any thoughts, comments? All right, uh, I believe now we're on to the Rad Comp contract.
Well, um, the reason I added, asked us to add it to the agenda is I am hoping that we can. Put this contract up for bid and, um, see what, um. I, instead of perpetually turning it over every year, and see what else is out there in terms of I T services. Radcom has, um. Been there for the city for several years now, and they could certainly could bid on it, and 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 then they've won the bid the last time, and they won it the time before that. And I I don't know how far it will go back with them, so there's, um. It just, um. Puts this more on scale with. The sheriff or any of the other contracts that we do bid on, and so, for example, even the sheriff's contract, like every year or every couple of years. We have a big discussion about services and stuff. So I'm just asking for the same discussion to happen with our I T services, that that that's all. Um, and, uh, it's, and it's. It happens to be the contracts, the way it's worded is this. Puts it on somebody to say, to put a timeout, say, hey, we wanna, so it, you know, in a way, I wish it wasn't worded that way, because it. Makes somebody like me look like the bad guy, like I'm trying to hurt somebody. Uh, when it, I wish it were just a routine thing, the contracts for X period of years, and then we, and then we put it up for bid again, just standard good governance.
And I, and and Pat, I I I get where you're coming from, um. To have a perpetual contract, um. I do not. I don't think that it, that's sustainable. Um, it should, we should have a limit on. Contract. Cycles that it could go through, whether that's a one-year cycle, two-year cycle, three-year cycle, uh, but there, there should be a. An ending date, and then the ability to review that contract ahead. And that ending date, um, whether that's put out to bid, whether that's just renegotiation like we do with the sheriff. Um, but, but I would agree that we just have a perpetual contract, um. I think, I think could, uh, could be dangerous down the road. And I, and I would agree with that.
Um, and and I'll just say, from the staff's side in terms of, of this contract, I was not aware that it. Renewed automatically and 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 that the renewal date was December first, because like a lot of things in this position, as I go through the year, I'm learning. There are new things coming up, and and as you stated, that it's perpetual, and they don't send a notice saying, hey, we're about to. Bring up the contract, so I, I I I completely understand what you're saying, I I just want to get some background on why this wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah, and.
But there's no provision in this contract that says anything about that, right?
The contract simply says that if it's not. It's not terminated December one, then it runs for the following year, and I believe there's a escalator in the, nope. I remember seeing that.
I'm a little surprised that we don't have more contracts that we look at every year.
Well, and and again, I think that could. Blow into this, um, and and again. Radcomp has done a, done a marvelous job with what what we deal with on a daily basis here. Um, and this is nothing about Radcomp, this is, this is about this contract, there are several other contracts, so I think we need to take a look at and review. Uh, to to ensure that we don't have this same type of verbiage within them.
Right, just the auto renew.
Yeah.
Scribing, I mean, you know, you turn in your credit card to some subscription on the internet, and all of a sudden you get a a bill the following year for the same thing. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I I I get.
We need to get away from that.
I have no problem with looking at this again, I mean, I I have no problem with looking at this again, and and even, I mean, I don't know how many options. We're necessarily going to find you in Stephenson, and we may, I don't know, but I know Red comp's done a good job, but looking at contracts. And rather than just letting him tick off, is it is super important, so yeah, I'm for it, absolutely.
So do, or so for this, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm. Do we?
Yes, send out an R F P. Do we put out an R F P? Gotta go out, and then they've got, because, uh, yes, the value of the contract is. Requires a R F P to go out, and then you gotta review the responses that come in.
So how do we, how do we notify Radcomp that we're doing that?
Uh, I think it's, now that you've voted on this, or. Given staff direction, I think you simply let them know that they're gonna be part of them. We believe they would submit a response to your R F P. Continue the R F P out, uh, here shortly, and then let Radcom know whoever the direct contact is there. That you're sending out, so they're aware that they can either respond or not respond.
Well, and.
Get other responses as well.
And and I guess the advantage for Radcomp is that they can take a look at what they've been charging.
Okay.
And maybe, maybe those charges need to be realigned with where they're at as far as CPI and. The things that they're dealing with too, so. Uh, I think it's beneficial for actually for both sides, not only for Radcomp, but all of our contracts that we need to to do that.
Can I ask a legal question? So, uh, in order to move forward and have this happen, would it take a motion from the council, or we're just? So there's no vote, I mean, how how would we proceed in terms of? Is it just? How do we give staff direction? Does it need to, how does the council do that? Should it be formal through a vote, or is it just consensus or what?
It's consensus, direction to staff to put out an R F P for I T services. Deadline to have responses in three weeks or whatever the appropriate time period is for that form of an R F P.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a wastewater treatment plant, uh, but you just, you you might get all R F Ps that come back triple what you're paying for that. Just still, I mean, that's the risk.
They should be, should be reviewed, but like I said, they could. All of our bids could come in much higher than they are.
That's always a downside, absolutely.
So we, so I think, uh, as far as the council, are we agreed that we'd like to.
Yeah.
R P to go out, Lucy, Lucy?
That, yeah.
Okay, okay, that that's direction enough, that's okay, sure.
Thank you.
So. Just on the process itself, the. The document needs to be created, a list of, you know, even looking at the old one and refining it, so there's going to be some time. Getting the document prepared, and then the publishing, and then the evaluation of the applicants, so. Just to keep an honest, keep an open mind as far as how long it's gonna take. But I think that the, the important part is the direction that staff is receiving is notify Radcomp not to renew the contract on January first.
Could we do this? Could we do a three-month, uh, maybe request of them a three-month extension? On the current contract, while you guys go through the process of developing the R F P. And and so that they understand what we're doing. And that way allows that us to still have I T services if something happens. Versus, a- and again, I don't know if that would be.
I mean, I I I can certainly ask, I I'm not sure if they offer that, but I I could ask.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if if it would all like me to do that, yeah, okay, okay.
That way, that way, we're still covered with I T services.
We don't want to, we don't want to cut the, cut I T services off at any point, we want to get the.
And it gives, I think, more time to respond to the R F, to the, uh. Requests from last.
Yeah, so Wes can simply, you can send it to me, I'll send you the draft, you just need to send a letter and ask me if they're gonna month to month. For a three-month period, well, and advise them that they're gonna get an opportunity to bid. But we're not trying to terminate their services, we're gonna make it without.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, we met the terms of the contract as far as the notice.
Yep, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Good.
All right, you do have some items in your packet as far as informational items go. Although we also have some, uh. Typically, we have the staff reports included in the packet, but, um, I wanted Cody a chance to bring you guys up to speed on the Cascade project.
Good, before you do that, Mayor, can we go back to the financial report for just a second?
Sure.
Um, within the financial report, I noticed that there that we are in the negative on several line items. I'm just, I'm a little bit concerned about. Why we are that way. You know, I look at the, the Lasher Street Improvement Fund. We're a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in the hole on that, is, and, um. The First Street. Two hundred and seventy eight thousand four hundred and twenty six. In the hole. Is that because we haven't received grants? What, why, why are we showing negatives in that?
Yeah, I can talk, um, I would assume it was probably some grants, um, I haven't seen it, but I will certainly look into it. I don't have an answer for you this second, but.
Okay, well, Cav, Cascade Avenue Mitigation Fund. Is sitting right now at nineteen thousand dollars left. And I'm not sure where they're at with that, but I think they're probably. Got a lot more work to do than nineteen thousand dollars. And then the utility improvement portion of that. Were eighty two thousand five hundred in the hole. So when I start seeing these negative numbers, even though we've got a bottom-line budget, when I start seeing these negative numbers. I really get concerned about the management of what's going on related to those funds.
And you know, there are some things that still need to be come in, to come in, so I'm gonna start reaching out to different, um. Different places that, you know, different fund revenue areas that are waiting for. Penance to come in, um.
Yeah, we haven't submitted anything to Public Works Board yet, um, this is the first pay apps that have come through for Cascade, um, this month.
Yeah, we haven't submitted anything to Public Works Board yet. Um this is the first pay apps that have come through for Cascade um this month.
Okay.
So now that these have been processed, we can actually submit to Public Works Board for part of that grant and then the rest of it will be alone. So that's part of the Cascade. Um Lasher is being charged to a uh to a grant as well. So I will check in to see where we're at with. Getting the funding for that, but we certainly still have funding in that.
And a lot of these are reimbursement.
I, yeah, and and I get that, I get that. But it just. I see that little negative sign in it.
So.
Makes me.
Along the lines of the discussion that we just had. About vouchers and expense preambles, uh negative numbers should probably have a. At the very least, a sticky, but something that's kinda keeps.
We're gonna grant funding or billing billing this out next month or whatever.
We'll make sure to have that moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
I I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just thanking uh the mayor for that comment because I think that that would, I agree with him that it would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh Cascade Project is still underway. I did send you guys some notes. Um I apologize for being so late in the day. But every day this week, the projects have made some development, so I was hesitant to send it out. As you've seen in there. The contractors have hit quite a few snags. Large part of it was the excavation did not go as easy as anticipated. We knew there was probably condensed fill C D F concrete. Um to the level, we did not know. Um it was thicker than anticipated. It took the contractor a bit longer than we would have liked to seem to get the proper equipment in there to bust through. Uh but they eventually did and they did get all the sewer installed. There was some more hiccups, but it was connected yesterday or Tuesday. That new line is live. Um all the laterals are tied into it as well. And we're switching gears over to water um. The unfortunate part about the section between Rover Russell and Levens. Is there was a bunch of unlocated fiber. It was live, there was.
It was so it was it was live?
Yeah, it's. Four three inch conduits. This thing has been located half a dozen times and they never once popped on survey. So we had no idea they were there until we were digging. And the thing with pipe bursting. Is you need these receiving pits that have to be an exact size. And there isn't enough area in between the gas line and those fiery lines to get those pits.
Wonderful.
Right, yeah. So me and Grayling have gone back and forth on trying to move pits, relocate pits, do some of it by open excavation. Some of it by pipe bursting, so we can continue forth with this and unfortunately. That portion of the project is just not obtainable unless we were to open trench at all to. Substantially raise the cost.
And at this point, the engineer's not excited.
Yeah, and it does not give the engineers very long to design an open trench plan and they don't with. The unmarked fiber, the unmarked power, they don't, they're not very on board with that, especially as where we're getting in the winter.
So that was the section that is eight inches, but it is A C.
It is eight inches.
Wanted to replace it.
The goal is to replace all the A C, but that section will remain.
For the now.
So what we're looking to do, so what we're going to do is from the east side of Levens down towards the boat launch. It remains eight inch and then around the port has an older red bar that they use at the shop down there. From there, it actually goes to four inch A C. So. That whole section is still pipe burstable, so that will be where the direction we move. It's still over half of the original plan. Pipe bursting and the really bright side of it is we get rid of that four inch. Very undersupplied for the amount of businesses that are down there.
Would you explain to everybody what pipe bursting is because? Some of us old folks uh.
I'm so sorry.
No clue what you're talking.
Hey, spoiler alert, this is really cool.
Is this where they shove the pipe inside of it?
And there's uh some really cool YouTube videos of it.
And some of us young people don't know either.
Heard of it, honestly. Um so. You have your water line. And they dig a pipe or a. Trench or hole on both sides of it and then they have one machine that sends a pipe with a busting head through. And it goes all the way through.
Through the.
And it could go through A C, it could go through ductile, it can go through plastic. And it goes through and it breaks that line. And then behind it, you drag a new water line.
Okay.
So we're going H T P E.
That way you don't have to do a trench.
That way you don't have to do a trench. The A C can stay in the ground instead of have to be removed. So it's safer that way and you don't have the extra pavement costs. You don't have the rock costs. You don't run the risk of compaction.
Pipe pushes of under the street.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, of course, and it actually ended up being cheaper than open trenching by a substantial amount, but. When you run into hiccups, you run into hiccups and it becomes unpayable.
So we are have been very diligent about. Dig once approach, so if you're gonna be digging holes, what else can go in the hole? What else can you fix while you're in the hole? So on the one hand, it's disappointing that we don't get the opportunity to pull that A C out. But plus it's the size that we needed it to be. The fact that we can get to the four inch and provide better service for the industrial area as it is is.
Good.
Good, it's a win.
It's a win, yeah, and we're gonna set it up to where if we want to continue. On a future extension, um west side of Cascade, that's all four inch as well, so at some point I'd like to see that on a project to replace that. Underneath the railroad tracks and will also probably need replaced at some point. Um same with.
Is that A C under the tracks?
It is, and it's actually A C sewer too. Which we don't have a ton of A C sewer, but that is lucky. That's one of the spots. So we're gonna set it up really well to where we will be able to open trench from there down into the future, so. There was uh some more scheduling conflicts with the third party contractor, the sub that does the A C mitigation for the pipe bursting pits. And they won't, they haven't been available, but they will be the first week of December. So we're looking at bursting around that timeframe. Uh paving as long as weather is good early next week, they're gonna pay up on the sewer and get the road restored back to where it is. Straight lights, we're going back up today. Um sidewalk panels are hopefully gonna get poured that same first week of December. So things are starting to close up.
The weather holds.
If the weather holds. Yeah, we we've discussed that the weather doesn't. Um priority will be paving. The intersection at Cascade and Russell where the big trucks are turning is the coal patch will hold up. And then we'll have roll coal patch in for the winter and then put that on the punch list and pave in the spring. Worst case, but I also want to make sure everybody gets a really solid product. I don't wanna do it halfway and have it fall apart because of the weather.
Thank you, Cody.
Absolutely, everybody, good job, thank you.
I have a follow up question, Mr. Jackson.
What's the pit for? What goes?
The two machines, so they have. They have to be perfectly level in line with the water line.
So you gotta dig those down, that's okay.
Yeah.
Because if everything's getting left in ground, like what's the pit for?
No, just the dragon.
That's where the dragon, okay.
Yeah, a big gnarly chain that pulls through. He was showing me pictures.
I'll be fun, don't go watch that.
Hey, I've I've got quite a few requests from other municipalities saying, hey. They were showing me a video the other day where they uh actually hit and I'm. They didn't know there was a buried valve and they pulled out an eight inch valve with about a four foot chuck and dump it and they just pulled the picture through the ground.
I was gonna say, yeah, that that will leave a.
But but it's not quite impressive what they.
Cool.
West, did you submit your report in the packet? I would entertain a motion to approve the vouchers.
Um could I? Make a question about the vouchers.
Sure.
Um there's a couple of um. Vouchers that. I believe we need to hold off on until we get back up on. Uh James, I I mentioned these to you. Landers Group, there's no backup on all there is, it's just an invoice. Well, you know, you know, more. Uh there's no backup on that, there's just an invoice on that. And then also um. The. Fire. Billing that we got that was. Uh missed on the first quarter. That was for two thousand four. Uh there's no backup on it. All there is is just the billing or just the invoice. Um and it really needs to be split out by the number of calls and. When we get those, when we get those billings from. The Sheriff's Office for Fire. They really need to have the documentation that splits out the fire district two calls and. The Stevenson Fire Calls and and. I don't think it would pass an auditor if we if the fire chief just said, well, these are fire district two calls. These are, we need to have that backup from. The agency that dispatches. Robert, got any questions?
Yeah, I was looking at the new contract. Um I think we required that in the new one, so I just got the phone with Aaron Hayes who blew it down. Our district, uh lead the council, and I tweaked everything. We're all good to go. He was supposed to review it tonight and get back to me before he gets on his plane tomorrow, so I can ship that out to you.
Okay, but that that's that's my concern is that we don't have the backup. And um. I just, I just, I think we need to be more diligent about the backup than we have attached to our. Our vouchers.
That was a question that he brought. They said define documents, and so we kinda went through. The definition works on what it is they need to provide us, because their auditor is on them too.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
What if I made a motion to approve the vouchers, accepting the ones that Dave mentioned that need uh.
Pending proper documentation.
They need proper documentation.
So we do need to pay the bills.
You second that?
Pending the proper.
I put that in the form of a question, but I will make that as a motion.
Yeah, the the motion is to approve the vouchers.
Accepting the ones.
Except the 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 two that that Dave.
Three.
For the three that they were talking about. Uh pending backup documentation.
Could I add some context on the molar for the group? Would that be acceptable or could I add context onto the Bron Molar? Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, but you need you need to have the documentation for the charges that are on that we're paying.
But but when we make the motion pending documentation, means as soon as they get the documentation, then they're approved. Does that does that help? So that means that.
On the invoice, he's putting his hours and his hourly rate and the contract, so I guess what else do you need him to put on there?
I would have to take a look at it again.
Because. Wanna make sure that he can do that in the future.
What is he doing?
He's a wastewater consultant, so he's just charting his time.
Does he have a time card or something? And he does like an daily? Seven hours, six point two.
That's how he charges it. So task one, task two, he's putting his how many hours he's working times his hourly rate.
Right, I think what Dave's looking for was, does he have a weekly or? I don't know, is it billing monthly? He's just saying, do you have a time sheet?
Late out.
It's Tuesday, it's Thursday, whichever days. Just. I worked eight eighty hours this month.
He is on call twenty four seven, so he can take a phone call at any time and then he's on site a couple of days a month. Provide training and other stuff like that.
The guy I met the other day?
Probably, yeah, yes.
Okay, let me let me. Talk to you guys. Let's go take a look at.
Absolutely, yeah, I just wanna make sure whatever you need is on there.
Yeah.
Okay, so I see. Who has the individual motion?
I made a motion pending, uh for the vouchers pending and for those items pending uh the backup documentation.
And I seconded that. We have the first and the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, uh as far as council reports, Lucy asked if she could read a statement. Um I'll let her.
I have a little report.
Okay, she has a report um. So. Uh go ahead.
One year ago today, I began my ongoing demonstration by sitting on the courthouse lawn dressed as beef. The masked character from Beef of Vendetta with a sign that Red Body Autonomy of Rebellion. Three years ago, a few minutes before midnight, a twenty two year old man who was angry about drag shows walked into a queer club in Colorado Springs and started shooting. Leaving five people dead just as November twentieth began. One of the victims was Kelly Loving, a trans woman who had recently moved to Colorado after experiencing anti-trans violence in her home state of Florida. November twentieth is Trans Day of Remembrance. This is an incomplete list. Of trans people. Who died by violence since I took office. These are only the ones who are reported and known to be trans. Many victims are dead named and misgendered by police media and their own families. Ninety percent of trans murder victims are trans feminine like me. Over sixty percent are black women. And thirty four percent are sex workers. Overall, we experience violence at a rate four times higher than the general population. And I'm going to read some excerpts from a new report. I'm now going to read some excerpts from a new report by the Trans Remembrance Project. You can find the full report by going to Trans Remembrance dot com. Twenty six years ago. Empathists in Boston organized the first Trans Day of Remembrance to mourn those we've lost and to demand an end to the violence against transgender people, particularly women of color. When Rita Hester and Chanel Pickett were both lost in violent anti-trans attacks within a few years of each other, trans people came together to remember, to mourn, and to demand better for those who would come after them. Since the last day of remembrance, we lost two extraordinary trans elders, Miss Major Griffin Gracie, seventy eight, and Lady Java at eighty two. They were legends who are already deeply missed and their legacies will reverberate for decades to come. One important factor tempers our grief. Miss Major and Lady Java were each celebrated during their lives. As artists, organizers, and pillars of our community, they will never be forgotten. Miss Major mentored generations of young trans people and fought to help trans women who had been incarcerated as the director of the T G I Justice Project. The project strengthens trans, intersex, and gender variant people for the fight against imprisonment, police violence, racism, and poverty. And seeks to create a world rooted in gender justice. Today, her daughters carry on her work all across the country. The film Major and the book Miss Major Speaks: Conversations with a Black Trans Revolutionary both carry her indomitable spirit forward to inspire new generations. Lady Java's groundbreaking nineteen sixty seven protest when she fought against the Los Angeles crossdressing laws which forbade her from working as a trans performer. Was a major step forward in the nascent L G B T Q I civil rights movement. And by the way, she was also represented by the A C L U for her protest. For the trans community and our allies, many of the vicious attacks threatened by President Trump's twenty twenty four campaign have come to pass. Officials in the highest levels of our government are constantly spreading misinformation and lies about trans people as well as directly calling for violence against us. This administration has attacked trans healthcare research and access, dismantled protections for queer youth in schools. Censored the very mention of trans people from our nation's history and federal resources and much more. Trans people in the United States have fought for centuries to live freely as ourselves, connect with each other, and access the resources we need. Until very recently, information about us was difficult to find. All too often, the stories of our loved ones were lost and any record of their true selves were buried with them. With the advent of the internet, the lines of connection between us grew stronger. One nineteen nineties ad in transgender tapestry magazine drew attention to over one thousand transgender internet sites. Today, social media is both a powerful tool and a dangerous minefield. The final posts of one teenage trans girl, talented gaming artist Charlotte Fosgate, were viciously mocked online after her tragic loss from suicide. At the same time, we often rely on social media to share the stories of lost loved ones and pressure the authorities to remember them accurately. We are now organizing to survive under a government that is actively erasing information about our lives. Valuable trans health data from the H H S and C D C has been either censored or taken offline. And research projects that even tangentially mention gender have been shut down. Trans people have long recognized the need for data that truly reflects our community's experiences and needs. The first major effort to document our experiences began in two thousand eight and evolved into the U S Trans Survey, now the largest survey of trans people in the world. With over ninety two thousand respondents nationwide, the twenty twenty two survey tripled participation from twenty fifteen. The growth of the survey, the bravery of those who answered it, and the deep data it provides about everything from employment and healthcare to civic engagement and family life. All hold firm against attempts to erase us. Black history has also been censored, especially as extremist politicians rip crucial lessons about race and culture from our schools. Black trans people's stories are at particular risk of erasure and their lives are at increased risk from violence. Thirty percent of the trans women we lost were killed by intimate partners. Sam Nordquist, a black trans man, was also tortured and killed by people he thought were his friends and partners. The intimacy of this violence is even harder to navigate when we are also being attacked relentlessly from the highest podiums in the land. Those who should love and protect us invite the same disinformation and harmful stereotypes peddled by those in power. This year, we've seen at least thirty two bills in Congress that would ban gender-affirming healthcare. In the last three years, anti-trans rhetoric and legislation from state lawmakers lawmakers has grown ever more extreme. Much like Trump's executive orders, state-level bills aim to enforce rigid, binary, and scientifically inaccurate definitions of sex and gender. This expands the harm already done by legislatures banning lifesaving healthcare for youth, restricting access to public spaces and facilities. And attempting to criminalize drag performances, the same kind of laws that tried to forbid Lady Java from performing. Failures of law enforcement repeatedly appear in the stories we collected this year. Two trans people, Linda Becerra Morin and Rick Alistair Newman, were shot by police. In Sam Nordquist's case. In Sam Nordquist's case, his murder sent shockwaves through the trans community. His mother Linda and sister Kayla repeatedly called the local police, asking them to check on him. On at least two occasions prior to his death, they were ignored, and no wellness checks were performed. This is particularly painful, given the extreme violence that Sam survived before his death. Investigations themselves also often fall short. Cheryl Lynn Branton Camus, the mother of Denver hairstylist Jack's Branton, was deeply frustrated by the months it took to even find her daughter's body. She wrote, "I have been treated as a burden. I have been treated as a pain. I have learned of the pain of so many transgender people, especially women. I have heard about the pain that transgender people experience daily from the police." The US Trans Survey found that sixty-two percent of respondents were very uncomfortable or somewhat uncomfortable, asking for help from the police because of their gender identity or expression. Police must take the vulnerability of trans people seriously. These attacks on our lives, both literal and legislative, must end. Trans people deserve to live freely without discrimination. We deserve access to the resources that we need to thrive and the ability to live without fear that the government will deny our existence, exclude us from public life, and put us in grave danger from extremists across the country. Lady Java's mother would watch in worried from their window as she waited for her daughter to come home safely after performing in late-night shows. She never knew when someone might kill me or do something terrible to me, Java recounted. She worried about Java's visibility as a trans person, saying that it's such a hard life. Java replied, "I know, mother, but someone has to make it better."
Thank you, Lucy. Anyone else?
I have a couple items, if I couldn't, I'm going to kind of piggyback on something that Mary brought up, really didn't see one. Um, I did attend the Cascade Transmission, uh, Transmission Project FSEC draft application meeting on Tuesday. And I, I haven't been on council long enough to know whether this, any presentations have ever been made before council regarding this issue or not. But, um,
You're talking about the renewable transmission line? That's never come up, it's fifteen years up in here.
All right, well, email went out, um, from Peril Loughlin, Lake Ridge Resources. And to, to, I thought I was going to see an informational meeting about what, what's going on with the project. And it turns out that it's actually one of their public hearings, their obligatory regulatory meetings. It looks like that FSEC is, is the, uh, sole arbiter of whether there's any issues, going to be any issues or any reason for pub, any further public hearings, that they're pretty much just going through with the project. And the concern that I had was that, well, aside from the environmental issues and running a line down the middle of the Columbia River, um, is that it's going to egress down here by, um, the museum, come across fourteen, go up back around Ash Lake, and then, you know, over the hill and down the other side, and it won't enter the water again until it goes past Bonneville Dam. And so there's a lot of, you know, county land, there's a lot of, uh, federal land, but there's also city properties, uh, very beginning of the words coming out, and to the best of my knowledge, and from what I'm hearing here tonight, there has been no, uh, communication or no input from the city regarding this. Um, then, I don't know that they've actually reached out to the city.
No.
On any part of this. And there are a whole, whole slew of uh, state and federal regulatory issues that probably need to be dealt with. So I'm, I bring it to the council's attention. I know that, I know I'm talking to Jeff Ruckle, there's nothing brought to planning, maybe nothing brought to our city administrator, and no discussion with the mayor, you see?
Early on in the project, and it's been four years, they did the dog and pony show, came around with the idea, and that was the end until that was just at the staff level, until now they're telling us that it's go time.
And we have no city representative on, on the council.
And this is, and this is basically a private endeavor.
That's St. Washington, and it's, and it's pulling, it's pulling, uh,
Well, Larry, you seem to know more about it, so why, why not?
Well, yes, uh, it, it's not a, a private effort. It, it has to go through NEPA and CFA and a whole bunch of other stuff, but it is not a dumb deal, trust me on this. They didn't know what they asked for, when they asked for a permit in the National Scenic Area. And, uh, uh, I, you, as per the attorney, uh, Nathan Baker, um, I think you heard him, Chuck.
Yeah.
He said there is a RCW requirement that the ci- impacted cities be represented. Well, you're not represented, and I, as a citizen, really ask that you be represented. You all need to know, it's seven point five miles, uh, through Stevenson.
I was gonna say, it's longer than that.
Well, it's a hundred miles long, but it does, it comes south in the east, and then it comes here, and goes through us and North Bonneville. So both cities do need to be, your impact, your citizens will be impacted. DOT wasn't at the meeting. If it's on Highway fourteen, DOT should be there for that thing. So I, I really ask you to switch yourselves forward.
Looked into, yeah, and some comments made, well, they, they'd spoken to, um, Lou Spencer, I guess, at, at the museum, well, she's, first of all, she's an employee, she doesn't own the building. It's on, you know, and then there'd be private properties, there's Canadian Lodge, gonna go over skirts, skirt that area, you know, the private properties around Ash Lake. Yeah. It's, anyway. Thank you.
Yeah, I saw that notice, I just couldn't get down there. I'm glad that you were able to go and, and hear that for, I just, I've only been able to read about that, uh, that meeting. Sure, oh, well, I don't know if we can, uh, Mr. May, oh, yeah, go on. Well, Mr. Ruckle gets his hand up. Okay, um, oh, it's part of this? It's part of this discussion, yeah.
Part of this discussion, uh, certainly, because I've been involved with these folks for the last several years, since I represent some property owners along the Ash Lake Road. And I have found the process to be less than transparent. They held a public hearing yesterday, um, there really wasn't, uh, any advance notice or information on that hearing in terms of what was going to go on. It was to look at the adequacy or the consistency of the proposal with local land use controls. There was no one there, either from the county or from the cities, that talked about their land use regulations. As soon as the hearing was closed, so was the opportunity to submit public comments. So, well, until the end of the day, I guess, until midnight. And so, you know, which has, is also a very limited opportunity for, for public input. Very little information upfront in terms of what the scope is going to be, very limited opportunity at the end in terms of being able to issue comments. This is a big project. It's proposed by a company that's located on the east coast. Its overall project estimated budget is one point five billion dollars. God small. Then they've talked about what can they do financially to some of these folks to alleviate, alleviate uh, their opposition or mitigate those impacts. There's a lot of money that is, that is flowing associated with this. You can actually get a copy of the draft application on the FSEC website. If you know how to make the website, it's not easy.
Tracking down.
Uh, so I'm, I, I guess I'm, I'm really concerned that you have a group of state agencies which come together as the Energy Facility Siding Council on the behalf of the state. Um, they're going to make that decision. They can technically override local land use controls in terms of making those decisions. They have done so on the east side of the state, in terms of some wind And I think, uh, you know, even though it may be well-designed, I just don't like the way that it relates to the local communities and the local governments in terms of the participation. And I really think the city needs to be represented in this planning process.
There is a, um, thumb drive at the library with the, with that, with the draft. If you really, really are inclined to see it, see it, however, there are legalities. According to the legal counsel presented last night, a draft cannot be a taken comment on from the public. You have to have a, an actual permit request. And they've not done that. This is, this is like, they're, they're just throwing stuff out there and looking to see what kind of pushback they're going to get, and then they're going to try to mitigate it. But the draft cannot be, it, it's not a legal document to take comment on. And why FSEC is pushing this is totally unknown.
The impression that I got leaving the meeting at the end of the night was this is basically a done deal, we're just kind of telling you about it.
Well, they've never seen what people do in the National Security.
If, if I could get the council's indulgence, I have one last piece. But, few minutes. I've been told, it's my understanding, tonight is my last.
Unless there's a surprise special meeting, yeah.
Yeah, you might have another meeting between now.
So, uh, just a quick, quick little statement, if, if I could. Uh, I'd like to, first of all, thank my fellow council members, our mayor, and our city administrator for the privilege of having been able to work with you two. Um, I've tried to always do my best have the, in the best interest of our community in mind and all my legislative decision-making during this time. I would like to leave this council, and I thought that perhaps we might have some new council members here tonight, so bear with me, part of this discussion was actually kind of designed for, for them. With a few thoughts before I go. And there's no secret that we've had, um, a council differing opinions for some time, and in the largest sense, this has never been a problem for me. It has always been a part of any democratic process, that people with different backgrounds, different experiences, and different ideologies collectively participate, share their opinions, and cast a vote as an expression of a pluralistic process. In the end, we are all one body. We should support one another and accept the collective will. And to this end, I would like to ask if you all acknowledge that our city has a newly-elected mayor, new mayor, Jenny Taylor. And then we have a mayor-run organizational city governance. Between the best of each council member's ability, we should support our newly-elected mayor, her program, and her vision for our community, as I have tried to support Scott. You should support our city administrator, city Wesley Flutman, and the many, the city employees that do the essential work of making our city a meaningful and wonderful place to live. Actions that are in, in conflict with this purpose only serve to inhibit the future viability of our community and its growth. While you will always want to draw on your own personal sense of propriety, your default as a council member should be to support the people who in their hearts have the best interests of our city always on their minds. In the end, our city council is a collective body of individuals and their opinions, yes, but a collective body that sees the need to support one another, given this to successfully administer its services to our community. This would be my hope for this council going forward. And I again want to thank you all for the support that you've given me during this period of time of my tenure.
I'll do it. Thanks, Joe. Appreciate the time.
Barb could be mad at me later for urging you to step up that day for the interview.
Anybody else for the greater good? Dave?
Um, I'd just like to res- respond to Lucy. What do you think we should do? Because you, you spoke a lot about on the national level, a lot of things going on.
I mean, hearing me out to the end of it as a start.
Pardon?
Hearing me out to the end of my statement was a start.
Okay. Would, what else would you like us to do?
uphold the constitution.
Well, I think we're trying to do that. But, you know, it's frustrating, frustrating for me to hear, hear of the, of the problems that are trans humans, if you will, because everybody's human, um, are having on a national level. But here locally, I, I'm trying to figure out what, what can we do collectively as human beings to move forward?
Well, one simple thing, if someone says something shitty about us, shut it down.
Okay.
Um, I was at the end of my session this week, my therapist asked what I want people to know about us. Um, and I told her I want them to know that we're people too. We have family and friends who love us, and we have to live with an unbearable amount of grief and fear because of how society treats us.
Well, I, I as a person will try to do better if I, you know, if I have done anything to, in the contrary, I wish you'd let me know. I apologize if I have. But I, I understand your concerns. I, I, I feel for what you're talking about.
I saw this council meeting coincided with Trans Day of Remembrance, and couldn't not say something.
Thank you.
I appreciate the decorum. I appreciate the candidates. So this was a much better way to talk about this issue than we have failed in the past. So, thank you, and thank you. Anyone else? So I would like to take a moment to thank you personally. It's, uh, it's one thing to put your name in the hat and run to be elected, but to come up here and sit and be grilled, and then be sitting at this table in ten minutes. So that, that takes an equal amount of guts. So I appreciate you stepping up and raising your hand, and you got a lot of things done. So, um, thank you for your service. All right, um, is there any additional public comment on things that we've already talked about?
Yes, there is.
That we're on.
Uh, I have a question about the sheriff's contract, uh, and, uh, Tracy left here because he mentioned mental health. Uh, and that it had been taken out because the city has not been used, what's that mean?
There is a, there is a, uh, in the addendum that's been attached to the contract, they talk about a, a crisis response team for mental health. And that has not been, um, a component of the sheriff's response. Um, and part of the sheriff's explanation of that is that everything seems to have gone to, uh, tele, telekonic, tele, something or other, where, where yes, thank you. And so, and so they don't have that team in place. And so that, we figure, okay, if, if that is a part of what we are providing as a service, i.e. law enforcement, then that should be pulled out of the contract, even though RCWs state that there will be responses by law enforcement and, and other mental health professionals to take care of, of those issues, so.
Well, as, so I, I know that if people are arrested, and if they have psy- uh, psychological issues or something's going on, that, that a therapist or a psychologist psychiatrist can go to the jail.
Yeah.
Now, does it have to be a Stevens, if a Stevenson person is arrested, is that part of the contract?
No, no, not now, not now, because, because the, um, the response is on a, um, Department of Health level as opposed to the law enforcement level. They bring them in, they bring them in for protect- protective custody, and at that point, then they're evaluated by a professional and determine what that, what needs to happen at that point. And from that, once they come, once that professional comes in, it's under their purview as to what happens from there.
I think I understand.
Yeah, Dave and Mike, can I say, tell me if this is correct, but we basically took out, or negotiated, took out items that we weren't getting anyway.
Animal control.
Yeah, I mean, in other words, we weren't getting that anyway, so we aren't losing anything. We, we weren't getting it, and we weren't going to get it. So we just said, let's clean up the contract.
That, that task force isn't going out with, on a call, so, so we weren't going to have that in our contract, ex- expect- So we weren't going to have that in our contract expecting something that they aren't and can't provide at this time.
Yeah, yeah.
So, to add on to that, I went to a mayor's exchange, I don't know, a couple of years ago, and there was mayors from all over the, the state, and one of the programs that it was a governor-led initiative, but with the understanding that a lot of the responses that law enforcement was dealing with was either drug or mental illness based. So, how do you prepare to react to those calls? And there was a great deal of effort to have ride-alongs, so someone that would be, why expect a deputy or police officer to deal with that crisis situation, whatever got us to this, why are, you know, a cop car rolling up? So, it did show a substantial shift in understanding what the issue was, not necessarily a criminal, that someone needed help. So it was kind of it was great to see that there was an understanding of the issues that we're dealing with, especially when it comes to homelessness. There's a lot of these calls. So, it's disheartening that that initiative has stalled, gone away, has never really gotten any serious traction. So, on the one hand, I understand that they're not prepared, they haven't. Why should we pay for it? I get that part of it. It's just, uh, maybe it's a sad narrative that we've lost that, that, um, that will to pursue that avenue when it comes to mental health and drug addiction.
And I don't know, I don't know if we've lost the real mayor. It's a matter of additional training for each one of those officers out there on the street on how to do that, because whenever you respond to a call like that, there's always a backstory. And whether or not you, as the law enforcement officer, are given the opportunity to try to absorb that backstory before things escalate. Um, and that was part of the push to have a ride-along, a professional, to be able to kind of circumvent that process and move it to the mental health side as opposed to what else is going on. And, um, and again, I'm not saying that we don't have that need, because I think we do have that need. My, my, my issue is, technology has stepped in to replace the human component. And it makes it, it just makes it more easy and more convenient to do telephysician or whatever they call that versus face-to-face interaction. And so, and that, and that, that's kind of frustrating. I think, I think we've lost a lot of ground there, and I agree with you.
But, Mr. Krasny, I actually did, when you were talking with Sheriff Shire, our contract last time was, the community response team is a new program and more specific. Is that now gone? Did they not implement?
They never did implement that.
Then I need to make a couple more edits, because it's still a part of it. Okay.
Yeah, no, that needs to be taken out.
Yeah, alright, that's why I was concerned.
Okay, I appreciate the conversation. Is there any additional public comment on items that we spoke about already this evening? Thank you all for a robust meeting tonight. I appreciate your input. I would like.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, I have one more meeting. I got one more meeting.
I'm thanking you right now.
I appreciate it. I'll take the thanks now.
I might not thank you next time.
But I can tell you that I could probably enumerate how many more times I get to adjourn the meeting at seven forty-five. Thank you all very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.